Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee Legislative Oversight LZ 22-0021 with Baltimore City Public Schools. I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chair of the Committee. I'd like to... Councilman John Bullock from the Ninth District Committee Member.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman calling from the First District Committee Member.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice President of the Council, Member of the Committee, Sharon Green-Milton, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Porter from the Tenth District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
First, I want to thank Dr. Santa Lisa and her team for joining us today and taking this opportunity to provide city council and the larger community with an in-depth update on the school systems reopening plan. Some of the topics we can expect to hear are progress on the COVID response and feedback from families, student mental health and emotional health, students' safety concern, and personalized learning. Before we start, I wanted to start with opening up, introducing Dr. Santa Lisa. I want everybody to know that Dr. Santa Lisa only can be here for an hour. She have a prior commitment. So, Dr. Santa Lisa, you can proceed if you would like to introduce your staff.
Thank you very much, Councilman Stokes, Chair Stokes, and greetings to the city council and to any public that are also tuning in today. I will start off by introducing at least who I see here for right now. I think we still have some folks working to get in. But with us, we have Allison Perkins-Cohen, who is Chief of Staff for City Schools. We also have Melissa Broome here, who is the Director for Legislative Affairs for City Schools. And I know we also will have Chief John Davis, who will be joining us. We will also have Chief Hike Hubbard, Tina Hike Hubbard, who will be joining us. We will also have Chief Joan DeBrowski, Chief Academic Officer. Chief Davis is Chief of Schools. Chief Hike Hubbard is Chief of Family, Community Engagement, and Communication. And again, the Chief of Staff, Allison Perkins-Cohen. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. And did you want me to just begin?
Just one quick note that I do, I think that, I think maybe Ms. Curran is working on it, but we do have a couple of staff members who need to be made panelists. So, I see Joan now, but John Davis also, and Tina Hike Hubbard.
Okay. Great. Good morning. Dr. DeBrowski?
I want to recognize Ms. Marguerite Curran, who's the committee staff person who do a great job.
Yes, she does.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
She always takes good care of us.
Whenever you're ready, everybody been elevated?
I do see Chief Davis. I see Chief DeBrowski. We're just waiting for Chief Hike Hubbard, but I can certainly get started.
Okay.
All right.
I'd like to turn this over to you and Dr. Santa Lisa. Now, before you start, I want to, can we go in this order and progress on COVID response and feedback from families, the order that I kind of laid out?
So, we have kind of the full presentation.
Okay, well, go ahead. That's fine.
But I do believe, Mr. Chair, that we will hit on all of the points that you thought that the city council would like to hear on, and I do believe that they are all covered in this presentation. But you let me know if that's not the case.
No, you can proceed.
Thank you. So, I just want to say again, good morning, Chairman Stokes, members of the committee. It is good to be here. And on behalf of our Board of School Commissioners and my entire team, we really appreciate this chance to come before you today to provide an update on the impact of the pandemic and where we are headed with the district's recovery plan. These really are important conversations, and we are grateful for your ongoing support. I've let the chairman know, as he mentioned, that I do have a prior commitment with the Gates Foundation. I will be with you for the first hour before leaving you in the very capable hands of my team that I just introduced. For today's hearing, we are planning to share a deep dive update on our recovery plan, Reconnect, Restore, and Reimagine. We recently gave a similar presentation to the school board, and they found it very helpful. Before we begin with the presentation, I would be remiss if I didn't share that we are continuing to see a precipitous drop in our COVID prevalence rates. Through our extensive testing regime, we continue to see significant improvements as compared to the surge in early January COVID rates as of last week. High school positivity rate is .2%. The K through eight prevalence is based on pool testing data, and that is .28%. So, we will obviously continue to monitor closely, but we did want to make sure you are aware of the very encouraging results that we continue to see in city schools. Additionally, my team is going to get into more of this during the presentation, but I wanted to personally flag for you some forthcoming changes as it relates to families' access to internet. As you well know, City Schools has been covering home internet for families through hotspots we provided during the pandemic. We did this because we had to do it in an emergency, but we were not in a place as a school system to take on long-term connectivity as a long-term commitment. We want to make sure, given how hard this council works for connectivity across our city, we wanted to make sure that you all are aware of this since you may receive some questions. So, before I turn over things over to the Chief of Staff, I just want to say again, thank you and appreciate the time today, and I will turn it over to Chief Perkins-Cohen now.
Dr. Santa Lisa, real quick, I'd like to recognize Councilman Torrance, Member of the Committee from the Seventh District. And I also like to recognize from the mayor's office, Ms. Sophia, and she knows she had to say her last name for me because I don't want to chop it up. So, Ms. Sophia, I apologize for not recognizing you on this call. So, accept my apology.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Santa Lisa, now you can proceed.
Thank you, Chairman Stokes. I'm going to turn it over now to Chief Perkins-Cohen.
Thank you so much, Dr. Santa Lisa, and thank you, Chairman Stokes, for having us and giving us the opportunity to talk about this. I think Melissa is going to share her screen so we can go through some of the key points that you wanted us to hit for the committee about our plan. So, you know, this is a good time to check in on our plan that we put in place. You know, we really engaged families over the late spring and early summer to get their feedback, families and staff and students about our plan. And so, this is a great time to kind of check in on where we are. You're on your email screen, not on the presentation. There we go. So, can you go to the next slide? Great. So, just going to give you a quick overview of the presentation and a little bit about the stakeholder engagement you asked about, Mr. Chair, Committee Chair Stokes, and some plan updates of where we are. Couple of things is that we always want to make sure that we are kind of addressing the key components of our plan was divided into these three different areas. So, one is preconditions. So, there are just certain things that need to be in place in order for us to have, to meet students' needs. So, it's the health and safety of our schools, and then it's connectivity to make sure that our students have access to the technology they need to access their learning. And then there's certain overarching commitments that's part of everything we do. And so, that's our work on equity that Dr. Durant leads. It's the professional learning we offer for our staff. It's the family and community engagement work we do. And then it's a student voice, is making sure we have ways to hear student voice. And then below that, you'll see the key strategies that we're going to talk through today that we're using to really address the needs of our students as we're returning from the pandemic and from the disruption in schooling. Next slide. It's not advancing. At least not for me. Great. So, this is just showing the alignment with our board's strategic priorities. We always want to make sure that we're grounding our work in our board priorities. And so, this, of course, being a comprehensive plan aligns with all the board priorities. Next slide. Stakeholder engagement. So, Mr. Committee Chair, you asked about engagement. We have really done a lot of work to engage families, students, teachers in this work and also to hear feedback along the way about how things are going. So, huge kudos to Chief Hike Hubbard, who you'll hear from later, and Chief Teresa Jones, who is not here or is not presenting, but is here for questions about the work that they've really done to engage folks. You'll see, this is really her work. I'm really presenting it just for continuity, but Tina is here to answer any questions. But you'll see that the just tremendous work that had happened to increase the engagement of students and teachers and families. And so, also shout out to Chief Davis and the work he did with principals, our school leaders, to make this happen. But you see a 13,000 increase in student responses that we got, as well as a 1,200-person response in the teacher and school-based staff, and then an 8,000-person response in what we heard from families. So, this is really robust feedback that we've gotten from our stakeholders. Next slide. Again, it's not advancing for me. Well, so I'll just start talking about the next slide is about stakeholder engagement for students and teachers and school leaders. So, for students, what we really, one, just a couple of key takeaways is that we heard from students, really interesting, which ties into the budget development we're doing this year, is a desire for the greater enrichment and learning opportunities that we know our students should have always had, but have not had access to because of the kind of long time underfunding. But they want more access to world languages. So, in grades five through eight, 40% of our students indicated that they wanted access to world languages. In grades nine through 12, that was 29% wanted more access to those world languages. For CTE grades nine through 12, 29% wanted more CTE programming. And for athletics, there was also the elementary grades. 36% of students wanted access to more athletic programming. And in our high schools, 28% expressed interest in more high school programming. For our teachers, so, and again, that's tied to our development with Kerwin. This being the first real year for Kerwin. One thing that you'll see as schools start developing their budget is a real focus on expanding those kinds of opportunities that our students have been denied for too long to make sure that they have the kind of robust programming they deserve. So, we're excited. We had an initial presentation to principals the other day, and I know I was getting texts from principals excited about the opportunity to offer some of the things to students that they know that they have needed for a long time. So, another piece is the feedback we heard from teachers. So, one thing we heard from teachers is that, you know, it was reflection, I think, of what this year has been, is that many things we're asking staff and students to do and our leaders to do in schools. So, they want more time for planning, more time for prep. They want additional, ongoing professional learning to help with the accelerated learning that we're asking them to do and the personalized learning approaches. So, Chief DeBrowski will talk about that work later, but it is really, I think, a testament to, you know, the hard work that our teachers are doing in really challenging circumstances, all the things they're balancing, and how much we're asking of them right now at this moment. Next slide. So, for family, I think this is specifically what you asked about, Councilman Stokes. Just a couple of highlights here is that, you know, we are hearing very positive things back from families about the academic supports their young people are learning. So, 73% are saying those supports were helpful or extremely helpful. Communication about their child's academic progress, also 73% saying that that was helpful from school-based support staff. I think a couple of important takeaways here is that we're seeing that they're rating very highly the health and safety protocols that we put in place, and we've put in very extensive health and safety protocols in place. But then, conversely, you'll see a lower rating, one of the lowest ratings on staff wellness and access to information. So, you know, I think that's also a testament to how much we're asking our staff to do right now in this moment. And so, have to keep thinking about how to address that. So, next slide. And next slide, just giving you info on the plan. So, this is just a quick overview of all the many health and safety protocols we have in place, which have been in place throughout the pandemic. You can go to the next slide, Melissa. So, just a quick reprise of some of the COVID response work we're doing. We did just recently stand up a COVID response department. We needed to do that. We, you know, I think had been resisting doing it because there are so many other things that our schools need, that we were doing very extensive testing, as you know, and contact tracing. But that was all done with staff who was doing it. The leading of that work was all done by staff who was doing it on top of other things, their regular jobs. And it's just the volume of it was so much that we've really recognized finally, we really need a department that's totally focused on this. So, we are now, we have this very robust testing program we've talked about before is the most comprehensive testing program in the state. It's one of the most comprehensive testing programs in the country. It's gotten nationally recognized for being, for the innovative work we're doing with testing. This slide is actually from a presentation we did to the board last week. And so, things in testing world and city schools move quickly, and this is already outdated. So, it says over 900,000 tests have been completed. We're past the million mark now. We've tested over a million staff and students through our testing program, which is a pretty astounding number. And so, that's great work, and it really helps us keep our schools safe. And frankly, it's also disruptive to schools. It's a lot of time taken away from other things. So, we're always trying to find that balance of trying to make sure that we're keeping everybody safe and that we're not, you know, not disrupting too much. So, we recently have been made changes to the elementary grades and now are introducing new changes to the high school grades that it will be a rapid test-to-stay programs that will reduce the duration of interruptions for students. Whereas, so if they are a close contact of somebody who tests positive, they just take a rapid test, and they can stay as long as they're negative. Or if they're in, anybody who's in a positive pool in the elementary grades will take a rapid test, and as long as they test negative, they can stay. So, that will be really helpful to reduce some of the time taken away from students being out of school. So, that's going to be an important change. And then contact tracing, too. We've put together a department that's just focused on contact tracing and are really excited about the leadership of that new org and our new testing org. Next slide. So, another thing that we focused on with our ESR dollars is trying to do some facility improvements and support. So, I think you've heard all before about the indoor air quality work, which is, again, one of the many important strategies we put in place to keep our schools safe and also PPE. But then, in this middle section is one you may not have heard as much about. We are going to be using some of the ESR dollars to do some improvements to those facilities that we know, and our buildings are way overdue. So, we're going to do 21 schools are going to be receiving health suite upgrades. 27 will, are in design right now for bathroom renovations. That's something we hear time and again from our families and students. And as a parent of former City Schools students, I used to hear it from my own children, that the bathrooms are just not in the condition they should be for young people. And so, we have identified 27 of the schools with bathrooms that need upgrades the most. Those are in design, and then we anticipate there'll be an additional 25 schools, again, prioritized based on need, who will get bathroom upgrades. We're also doing some HVAC repairs and capital projects for window and door replacements, and then updating the building automation system we put in place after January 2018, that very cold winter where we had a lot of classrooms that were too cold to open. We now can remotely tell their temperature, and we're putting additional ways to remotely censor the condition of our buildings. Again, our all focus is always keeping kids in school as much as we can and not losing academic time. Next slide. So, devices and connectivity. We have more than 70,000 student Chromebooks that we've purchased and have distributed 65,000 of those to make sure that students have access to that technology. We also have more than 21,000 hotspots and broadband connections available to students. Dr. Santa Lisa's talked about this a little bit in her remarks, but I was just going to touch on it again, that I think we did, we have sponsored those relationships, but that is not something that we have a long-term commitment to. We've committed to those hotspots and those connections through the summer. But then, we're still working on our budget for next year, but we have not made that longer-term commitment for those. This is something that city schools took the responsibility for in the emergency and the pandemic, but providing utility like internet doesn't rest with school systems. And so, there needs to be a city or statewide strategy to provide those internet connections to the citizens of Baltimore going forward. And so, that's just something we wanted to flag for the committee. Next. And then our overarching commitments, I think, is this going over to Tina? Is Tina here? I know I was getting texts while I was talking, so I couldn't read them.
Cohen, real quick, before you start, I want to recognize Councilman Glover from the Thirteenth District, Member of the Committee, who was having internet issues.
Oh, great. All right, Tina?
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for having me here. I'm coming to talk to you today about our overarching commitments of youth engagement and family engagement. I just want to quickly highlight some things we've been doing to make sure we're elevating those things in our work. So, first off, we want to make sure on our three-R plan, everyone knows that we want to be really intentional about how we engage our students and think about how we lift their voice up and to the, which was representative in all the work we're doing, our planning, and that kind of thing. Just want to highlight a couple of things here. First off, we have our CEO, Advisory Council's been relaunched. During the pandemic, we had to pause it, and now we're back in person. We've launched that. We have let school leaders come into the CEO on a regular basis to talk about their concerns, thoughts, et cetera. Coupled with that, we're also going to, we're launching a new student government program where some of our schools have robust student governments, some do not. So, we want to make sure that that is inclusive of how we are identifying student leaders at all of our schools, starting with high school and then going on to middle school. And then finally, our youth ambassador program, which we're really excited about. We started during the pandemic, is a way for students to pick projects at their schools, receive a stipend from city schools, and a staff advisor is receiving a stipend as well to work on a key project for their school. They do youth surveys where they should pull their peers to find out what they'd like them to work on, and then pick a product at the school they can actually really invest time and energy in to really represent student need and concern at their own schools. Next slide, please. For our key focus areas for family engagement, it's really about building and sustaining authentic family and school relationships. And we do have a capacity-building model, given that my team is not super large, but it's about having our staff working with principals by CLN in schools to coach them on how to support the family engagement. So, we're strengthening decision-making and advocacy for our families, having high-quality foundational learning for our staff so they understand what best practice looks like for engaging families. We've also started some parent-led support groups through our parent cafes. We have talked about wellness in the teacher and staff space and in the student space, but our parent cafes are allowing us to actually give wellness opportunities for our families to engage with each other and train parents on how to lead those wellness activities for families. And then finally, linking family engagement to student learning and school improvement is our key focus. Next slide, please. Here's a couple of examples. I already mentioned parent cafes as wellness for families, but I'll just highlight two more. Our school, family, and community councils. Part of our launch of our new FCE, our Family, Community Engagement Policy this last May, we changed the title from School, Family Council to School, Family, and Community Councils. We have now trained 125 council chairs and principals who really have a stronger, robust School, Family, and Community Council. We know that some schools, they work really well, and in some schools, they need some coaching and support. And so, we actually have in place, we're hiring a new staff person to really go deep with those schools and creating a rubric on what effective practice looks like, so we could actually guarantee that those are functioning at our schools and that parents can go in with them to have an opportunity to engage in advocacy and elevate their voice. And then another example is our FCE face advisory. After our policy launched in May, we created an advisory group that is led, as you see here, by parents, youth, staff, neighborhood leaders, teachers, and partners to help us create our implementation plan around the new family engagement policy to make sure we're honoring those voices, but also representing and fulfilling all the exciting things you outlined in our policy. And then last, our face fellowship is really a fellowship for principals to go really deep with school-based teams and coach them on how we do family engagement at the school level. So, I'll pause there. I'm going to turn it over to Chief John Davis on professional development for teachers and leaders.
Thanks, Chief Hike Hubbard, and good morning, everyone. Yes, the professional learning that we put in place is part of our overarching commitments. And what you can see here is that it doesn't matter if it's the teachers and our school-based staff in that top list, or if it is the principals and our school leaders that we really talk to just about every week. We've been very aligned with the areas that we know are going to help our students and ensure that they accelerate after the pandemic, that they have personalized learning, and that this is always a focused and cohesive strategy. Next slide, please. Not only, though, does the professional learning have to come from district leadership, but it also happens at the school site. And opportunity culture is one of the main ways that we do this. We started this with just a few schools. It's expanded to 20. We will expand to eight more the following year, and it's really around some of our best teachers supporting their teacher colleagues through instructional coaching. You can see some of the impacts with respect to early literacy, and it gives us a lot of faith that not only are the district-wide initiatives taking root, but what happens at the school level on a day-to-day basis really propels teachers so that they're able to meet student needs. Let's keep going. We want to transition a bit to our key strategies. And you can see the five along the top, from wellness, school, culture, and climate to all the way to expanded opportunities. What I want to point out here is there's a number of different areas of emphasis under each one. We'll quickly go through these strategies, but know that it is very multifaceted. In some cases, we're expanding things that we were already doing, and in some cases, they're very new, and often, they're in service to our student learning plan. We're going to start with wellness, school, culture, and climate. And there were nine domains that we work with our school leaders around, but we focused on the two that are bolded, high-quality stakeholder experience and nurturing relationships and well-being. Those were focus points at the beginning of the year. Let's keep going. When it comes to school, culture, and climate, and again, I'm going to, the picture that is there is not just a random picture. It's a picture at Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School, where on the first day of school, they were already working in teams and doing activities to get students acclimated to being back in person every single day. In the end, though, schools created plans with those two focus areas I just mentioned, and then a couple more based on the needs of their school community, right? We had school-based staff that attended Culture and Climate 101, Professional Development. And I'm also just going to point out at the bottom, we have district-wide mediations here at North Avenue. We are a very good mediator, and when things are really tricky and really difficult between either students or families, right? We've already served, I mean, this is a month old, so we're probably close to 400 students that we've served and a number of schools that have taken advantage of this. Shifting to our focus on mental and emotional health, right? Advisory is one of the key ways where you have either every day on the elementary end, or at least every week on the secondary end, there is time to focus on certain aspects like relationship building or bullying prevention. Relationship building was the first month, and then the second month in October, we focused on bullying prevention. We have, we have folks at every school that are kind of the advisory champions. We work with them so that they can promote it within their school. We make sure they're scheduled into either the daily or weekly block, and we continue to provide resources so that in the end, right, there is time to begin to hit the mental and emotional health that we know is needed. Another aspect is our, it's really around our student wellness support teams. And this is something that kind of happened at some schools previously, but it was another area of emphasis. And the student wellness support teams, you can see who is on the teams. It is a group of folks that are mostly clinicians that get together to talk through students, to talk through their needs, and figure out where that next step is. We've been really excited about this and how it's taken off in our schools. So much so that, like I said, previously, we didn't have many of these student wellness support teams. Now, we're up to 67% of our schools that have a functioning one. And frankly, the ones that are struggling a bit are probably our smaller schools that don't have as many clinicians because their population is just smaller, right? We've given explicit direction around what we wanted the first 30 days to entail. I'll give you an example, right, at 40. At Worthington, they created a wonderful video where they introduced all of their clinicians because quite frankly, families don't always know who to go to on the school side. Who is the social worker? Who is the psychologist? So they created a wonderful video that they sent out to their community to introduce them. And it's those types of best practices that we're seeing pop up in our schools, and we're sharing them if you go back to the, to one of the school leader, school staff slides, where we, we make sure that not only is one school doing it, but that everyone else sees We've also been focused on staff wellness, right? We've modified some of our days because what we heard was that, yes, all of these things are the right things. We heard student learning plans are great, that people understand them, but in the end, we need more time to get them done. So we modified some of our days to give teachers more time. Additionally, you can see the long list there, but again, what I would, what I would focus on is the fact that as a district, we try to be very responsive to our staff, even to a point that, that this Friday, right, instead of having a full day of professional development, we'll have a half day and give the second half to teachers and school-based staff. Like for a lot of initiatives that you've seen, that we've stated previously and we had deadlines around them, we've been very flexible with our staff members and giving them time, working on their deadlines to ensure that they, you know, part of the wellness isn't just social, emotional learning or things of that magnitude for adults, it's also making sure that they can do their job well. And when we hear things from our school communities, we've made adjustments through these first five or six months, something that I know we're going to have to continue to do as well. It's a big part of staff wellness. I'm going to go ahead and transition this over to our chief academic officer, Dr. DeBrowski.
Thanks so much, Chief Davis. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I just want to shout out the, the work our educators have been doing in the area of acceleration and personalized learning. What you see on this slide is a model that we have been working through this year as we brought students back for in-person learning and really needed to prioritize the most important standards to focus on as we work hard to bring them to grade-level instruction. And so this model continues to be a big part of the work we're doing in our professional learning that Chief Davis signaled earlier. If we go to the next slide, though, you'll see those structures a little bit more listed out for us. So I want to give a huge celebration to our educators, our school leaders who supported student learning plans. That was one of our big sort of initiatives, coming back to school this fall in person. So excited that we have over forty-five thousand of our students now who have a student learning plan to really guide that. We are continuing to work on making sure that every student has a plan that really identifies those key areas of strengths and those key areas of support and that families and teachers are working together to support our students. We've really invested in personalized learning platforms, digital technology that allows students to have very adaptive personalized work to help meet them right where they are. We're focusing on small group instruction, tutoring and some virtual learning. So let me talk a little bit more about our tutoring efforts. Again, a huge lift of work as we've really dug into the opportunity to think about tutoring in a very, very specific way, right? So it's, it's high dosage, it's during the school day, it's a qualified tutor, it's individualized, and again, really thinking about how we use the data that we have from our assessments to inform a very, very clear plan of instruction for students. So when we think about tutoring, again, this is a brand-new body of work for us that we've really lifted up. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that we've had some great impact very fast. Over twelve thousand students are engaging and receiving tutoring. We are coordinating it so that every school in our district can have a partner for tutoring. We've got some virtual models, we've got in-person models, and the pieces that are really important here is that there are very clear criteria from our state and federal grants on how these programs have to exist. They have to have what we call ESAA evidence to show that they're effective. So one of the challenges we face here is that there are only so many vendors and so many programs that meet this very clear criteria from our, from our grants. So we're mindful of how do we increase and grow our tutoring work as we're trying to meet the demand. And this is something that, you know, again, districts across the country are experiencing as we're trying to ramp up this academic recovery work. But again, huge efforts being done there. When we think about reimagined time, we've looked closely at how that school day is used. Again, I highlighted earlier, personalized learning, small groups, tutoring. Again, we're looking, though, at how we're also thinking about extending learning, and I'm going to highlight that as well. But I do want to say, too, we've been looking close at our CTE programming, and that work continues as part of a strategic plan and how we're making sure students are getting opportunities to do work that prepares them for careers in college that are, that are, again, meaningful in this twenty-first century. Again, let me take a look at the extended learning. Again, speaking to Chief Davis and all that's happening in our schools and just lifting up the work, over ninety of our schools now have an extended learning program with a laser focus on math or literacy, or in our high schools focused on credit recovery. We're mindful of keeping that social, emotional wellness in all of those programs. And again, we continue to work with our school-based educators to support all the logistics involved of, of making sure the right students are coming for that after-school support so that we're really able to, again, focus on that acceleration. All of these strategies work together. On the next slide, you'll see here, another important commitment we made was how we were going to use this moment to expand enrichment and academic opportunities. So again, we've done, done a number of things here, and I just want to highlight a couple for this, for this presentation. We're going to talk about athletics, and we're going to talk about our algebra access. So again, if we go to the next slide, we have really done a lot to lift up how we think about our K-eight experience and what that means for intramurals and clubs and things like that. So we're really excited that forty-five of our schools now at the K-eight level have some type of intramural activities and that our high schools continue to have those important sports, soccer, football, et cetera, as you can see. We will continue to work on this, on this aspect of our plan as we think about new short seasons in the spring as we're moving into track and field and flag football, and that our strategy is, again, supported through some of the partnerships here, Under Armour, the Fund for Educational Excellence and Baltimore's Promise. And then this last piece here on algebra access, one of our commitments is how do we ensure that our eighth graders are able to access algebra? We've been able to really think creatively in the space of virtual learning to support how we can increase that number so that students in even our small middle schools can have an opportunity to take, to take that eighth-grade algebra. And then what does that mean for how we think about honors in sixth grade and seventh grade? So sort of feeding that pipeline, if you will. And so just excited to share that we are now offering a virtual algebra class that's, again, students from nine different schools are able to be part of that. We're looking to increase that and hiring another virtual algebra teacher. And again, not just in service of the eighth grade, but how we're identifying early on those sixth and seventh graders and building that readiness and where we can harness the opportunity to expand that through virtual learning. All right, at this point, I think I'm tossing it back to Chief Perkins Cohen.
Yes, thank you, Joan. So I'm going to bring it home and try to make it pretty fast here so that we can get to the council, to all your council members' questions. So just, this is just to remind you that we really align this work with the, our other, you know, key priorities, our blueprint, our ESAA strategic plan, and then our board priorities. Next slide. So we, you know, we have received a number of grants to support the plan, and I want to give a quick shout out to Kim Hoffman, who I don't think is here, but she is just an expert at, all these different funding streams we have have different requirements of what you can and cannot spend it on, different timeframes, different reporting requirements. And so Kim is just an expert at braiding those together and trying to be, figure out how we can use them all to leverage each other and really meet the needs of our students. So we're really grateful for that work. Next slide. So there's just an example of some of the things we're spending at schools, so some of the ways that schools have experienced these funds. So there's been eighty-nine million dollars for FY22 that had directly supported schools, traditional schools. So over thirty-three-point-eight million of those grants went to school budgets for things like intervention funds, so two hundred and fifty dollars per student for, for intervention funds, two hundred dollars per student for that arts, athletics and enrichment that Chief DeBrowski was talking about, that expansion, ten thousand dollars for those school, culture and climate plans that Chief Davis mentioned. And then another thing is, you know, I mentioned earlier, the, the feeling of staff that they don't have enough time. There's just so many things we're putting on schools, so, and there's so many things they have to do right now between health and safety and then the academic needs of students that they, temporary supports is something we really heard from student, schools that would be really helpful for them. Oh, and also disruptions from people being out with COVID. So we, we gave in schools the ability to have additional temporary staff in their schools to help meet all the many needs they have to meet right now to serve their students. And then we also have supplemental supports that we've provided that are things like those facility upgrades I mentioned that are, that schools are experiencing, the expansive COVID testing that all schools are receiving, the tutoring that Chief DeBrowski mentioned, and then the air quality work and technology. Next slide. And then for charter schools, the way we always do for charter and contract schools is that we pretty, you know, we take as minimally amount as we can centrally so that they have the resources to support their board-approved charter contract. And so they've gotten all four years of their SR funding upfront for them to determine how they are going to meet the needs for their students in this moment. And, oh, last one, this came from the committee chair, had a question, I think, about a parent with, with a unresolved issue, and I know that all members of the city council get questions from constituents about something they're concerned about. So just wanted to give information out about how to address those concerns. So for academic-type questions, the first place that, that parents should go is to talk to their teacher and, and to try to resolve it with the teacher, and if they can't resolve it with their teacher, talk to their principal. It's not on here, but if they're a charter school, if, if they've tried to resolve it with their teacher and their principal, then they should also go next to the operator. I'm a former charter operator myself, and so that's kind of the next stop to try to see if the operator can help resolve it. And then for concerns about school climate and safety, they should go to their principal. And then if through those channels, the, the teacher, the principal, the operator, in the case of a charter school, it's not resolved, then bring that to our CEO and Budsmann, who is Karen Lawrence. She actually, just yesterday, we did our milestone celebrations for staff, and Karen Lawrence has been a city schools employee for forty-eight years. We just recognized her yesterday. She's incredible and she's really great at hearing from parents about their concerns and helping resolve them. So that, there's the information about how to get in touch with Karen's office, the CEO on Budsmann's office, for any issues that can't be resolved at the school level. And I think that's it, is that right? Yep. And so this would be the time to hand it back to you all for questions.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it, and I'm glad to see that we have some money for maintenance because we know we have old schools here in the city. So this is going to be a request real quick. Can we get, can I get a list of those schools? Which schools they are and what kind of makes me down so I can share with my colleagues, not just committee members, but all the council people, because it covers, I'm sure, a lot of the council districts.
Yeah, we will follow up with that.
I wanted to ask you, because what conversations are, and this is more about the digital vibe, what conversations are you having with administration or our state partners to create a plan that will ensure vulnerable families, vulnerable families? Vulnerable families stay connected because of, I mean, I know because of the pandemic, you had to roll out the hotspots, the laptops, and now that the schools are fully open again, that's the question.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we've continued to do and through the hard work of Chief High Cupboard and our chief information and technology officer, Tommy Jones, is continue to try to partner with the city in the overall expansion of, of internet connectivity access. So a lot of that has been, you know, in the area of, you know, how are there ways that different grants or efforts that are happening at that, at that time, you know, we can become part of? I think we know that Councilman Cohen has been doing a lot of work with city schools' young people, and so students themselves remain advocates. And then frankly, I do a lot along with our legislative team, both with our state legislators as well as our federal, federal representatives as well. So everything from testifying in Washington to hearings at the state level, because I do think it's a full-court press. So that is what we are doing. We avail ourselves to that. Again, some of the early negotiations that we did for connectivity, you know, are why, you know, some families, you know, families that are taking advantage of it have had extended contracts because of advocacy from the community as well as, you know, negotiations that, that we have also joined efforts on. So we will continue to do that and definitely encourage city council to let us know where we can be of help. But as we all know, it's, it's really shouldn't be on school districts to advocate for, not just advocate, but to deliver community-wide connectivity. We are absolutely part of the network of support, absolutely part of the advocacy push, and where we can, we have leveraged funds to take on a role that frankly, we weren't designed to, but we will, you know, we'll continue to be part of that, absolutely.
Thank you. And my second question, I was, have read an article in paper about Patterson, about six hundred and twenty students out of those students, four hundred and eighty-four of them tested at an elementary school reading and includes seventy-one high school students reading at a kindergarten level and eighty-eight students reading at third grade level. Can you explain exactly in detail what did that mean? Because this, I want to get a better understanding of that, so.
Sure, and so I do see Chief DeBrowski and Chief Davis, so they can absolutely weigh in here because they have more of the detail. I will, as an overview, say a couple of things. One, we need to keep in mind what the data is used for and the fact that Patterson High School serves large numbers of recently arrived students to this country, large numbers of multilingual students. And the example that I often give, Councilman, is that if I were to be deposited, if I were to land on the shores of Russia tomorrow and somebody gave me an early reading assessment in Russian, I would probably test at the kindergarten level as well. I think that there are a number of factors. That's not the entire student body at Patterson. It is part of what we are doing from a diagnostic standpoint, but I do think we need to keep in mind what the profile is of students and that data taken out of context to be weaponized against students that are at varying levels of their language development is deliberate, and it's a deliberate use and misuse, frankly, of that data, and it's intentional. So I will give that frame, but I will give it over to both chiefs to add the detail that I know they have. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, that was a little bit more than just a frame. That was, that was the best part of, of the real situation at Patterson that we should be, we should be honest about, right? First of all, let's be clear, right? This test was given after students being eighteen months away from school and having to work virtually. We also know that some of the students were seventh graders the last time they, they actually took any type of test in person or were in person. The information that Dr. Santalisa was talking about, I'll go a little bit farther and say, about forty percent of the students at Patterson are English language learners, and some of them are at, again, from the example that Dr. Santalisa used, are very new to the country. So if they're taking a test, yes, there's going to be some students that score very low. We want to know that for diagnostic reasons so that we can then make the right instruction for them. I'll go a little bit farther. We do that so that we know about all of our students, but when they take a state assessment, they don't even need to take the state assessment their first year in the country because the state knows that it takes a minute to ramp up. We still do that as a diagnostic way, and again, the data is being used in a way that that really is not, it, as Dr. Santalisa said, weaponized against them. With all of that, though, there are things that Patterson has been doing, and that has been a combination between the school and the academic office. I know Dr. DeBrowski can talk about that for a minute.
Yep, thanks, Chief Davis. So again, I, I think, just to echo again, the proactive stance of using a diagnostic tool in order to be responsive. in order to be responsive to students is something we believe in and we want to continue to do. And it requires a responsibility of how we use that data to inform instructional next steps, right? And so at Patterson, knowing what they know, they invested in several programs specifically designed to support students who are reading multiple grade levels below. They created in their schedule, multiple sections so that students could access reading through a strategic approach. Again, responsive to where students were coming in so that they could work towards that acceleration. And again, as I highlighted earlier, some of those digital tools that we have, the platforms we have, Patterson has been incredibly thoughtful about making sure that kids can access those different tools that are geared towards high school reading. Again, prioritizing time in the schedule during the school day and getting them that connectivity at home so they can work on it. So where I think we should be celebrating the intentional work of, of naming and calling out this important sort of data. I again, I, I echo my colleagues here and the concerns of if we weaponize the data, we're losing the important responsibility we have to support our students who come to us. So all that to say, I'm, I'm happy to, to address more, but there's a lot of academic follow-up because of the data we received.
Well, thank you so much. I wanted to get a better understanding of that. And actually, the committee members and councilmen and particularly the community. So thank you for that explanation. So I'm gonna do my duty as I do to ask my committee members two questions on the first round. So I have done my two. So I'm a, ask Council Vice President Sharon Middleton, does she have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first of all, just want to say, you know, I appreciate these quarterly updates. And so that's kind of going to phrase into what my first question is. I kind of noticed on the PowerPoint sheet for stakeholder engagement and noticed that council members were not listed on that sheet unless I missed it. I really feel that we as a council are definitely stakeholders and, you know, should be a part of even more engagement. We, you, and some of you have said it yourself, we are the ones that connect with the communities. The parents come to us as soon as there is word that a school is closing, that there's a problem with COVID. I could go down the list. We are where the rubber meets the road with everything, including what goes on in the schools in our district. So we, please put us on that list of stakeholders. We have, we try to connect individually with certain concerns. We are like surrogate parents. So I, unless there's a reason you have not put that on there, I, I, we need to have that dialogue because I feel we should be listed as stakeholders for education in, in, in our city.
Council Vice President.
If you want to comment on that, sure.
Yeah, I was gonna ask him to comment. Thank you.
Sure. Now, more than happy to. So I think Councilwoman, one, we are more than open to what, you know, if there are additional, you know, venues or ways that you have us communicate, more than happy to do that. I meet regularly with the, the chairman, Chairman Stokes. We have regular meetings, which for me have been very helpful to hear some of what those concerns are. So, and that's what these quarterly updates are for. We, we gave you the same in-depth quarterly update that our board asked for and more than happy to do that. Again, you know, the point person that we have for that in terms of whether it is just the listing of the stakeholders, whether you would like us to actually list in our public communication, I can let Tina High Cupboard respond to that. So, but, but if it is in terms of venues and ways of communicating, I, but whenever we are asked, and that goes for whether it is the state delegation, members of the state delegation, either the House or the Senate, whether it is this body, city council, which is why we work with the chairman to make sure that when he has, when, you know, when he feels that there needs to be more of an update to the full city council, which is why I believe he instituted these quarterly updates, we do that. Our, our team takes the, the feedback. Whenever I get a question about a particular school, I have members of city council that call, but we are always open to that. And then Tina, if you want to respond in terms of the slide, I think the actual communication around stakeholders was because of very pointed stakeholders that the board wanted very kind of clear communication about. We give them legislative updates and, and, you know, elected official updates regularly, so they're aware of those. And so that could be why it wasn't in the communication, but more than happy to continue to work with the chair and the city council at whole, if there are other ways of communicating that you'd like to suggest for us. But Tina, did you have anything to add?
Before Tina, before, before Tina responds, I'd like to respond. There are times, and I understand what you're saying as a whole, but there are times that think, things happen in school, in our schools that are emergencies that come to us and we know nothing about, and we learn through the school. We don't get any, I, I'll speak for myself. I don't get any information from your administration before an incident occurs. And then I have to react as an advocate for my, for the, the schools that I represent. And, you know, we can have a personal discussion later on this, but, you know, there was something that happened recently. So I, I respect that you bring stuff as a body and also speak to the chair, but we need to be respected individually, not, not at these quarterly meetings. We need to be notified on a regular basis and we need to be considered as stakeholders. Go ahead, Tina.
Yeah, thank you. My apologies. I'm gonna need to cut off for the meeting that I referenced earlier and let the council know. So my apologies on that. Thank you for the feedback, Vice President Middleton, and we will definitely work to address your concerns. Thanks, Tina. Thank you, everybody.
Absolutely. Just want to jump in and say what you saw today was actually feedback collected from our families, students, teachers, school-based staff, the district office staff, right? You actually didn't see the full complement that we actually tout as our stakeholder engagement activities. So Vice President Milton, I hear you on the, the targeting of, of actual council folks with their schools and I appreciate that. I just want to also offer that on the board meeting on twenty-second of February, we're actually going to do a full presentation on the larger, you know, we got the more detail on the data, that kind of thing. Our data will be on the website for those that was collected, but also examples being shared with the board and the public about who our other stakeholders are and how we're actually engaging them across the board. So for example, P-CAB wasn't mentioned, C-CAC was, I could go a whole list of folks that were not mentioned in this, but this was only about data we collected from individual groups that we serve on a day-to-day basis. But you're absolutely right. The city council and all of those other groups should be acknowledged as part of our stakeholder group and that will be part of our board deck on the twenty-second.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Chair, my quick second question, and I know.
Before you start, Vice Chair, Vice President, I wanted to get the request right. Could you explain so I can give it to Mr. Marguerite so we can get it right? So your quest is that, can you explain it? Because I'm confused.
I want, I think we should be included as, as important stakeho- engaged stakeholders. And they did give an explanation of, they don't have them all listed, but we should be on the top of, or not at the top, but within that first list. It's, it's, you know, it's important to the council. It's, it's, it's something that needs to happen. So I think that Tina also mentioned she was gonna maybe give us the total list of other names that she had mentioned that were not included.
Okay, thank you.
But going into my second question, which kind of you started the, I guess, the dialogue, you know, about, I guess, trying to really reach our impoverished neighborhoods. And I need to know what, we need to know what kind of connectivity and data do you have for our schools that are really struggling in our impoverished neighborhoods? We don't have that data and we need direct individually data that can help us understand what, how they are connecting with these schools are struck, that are struggling through COVID and, and everything else. Gun violence, the whole nine yards. Would someone like to respond, please?
So, and, and Vice Chair, do you mean the connectivity in terms of electronic connectivity? Or you mean connecting when there is concerns in the community?
Connecting academically because that's the main, we're trying to get students that are, you know, they're coming from family, drug addicted fam- trauma-type families. We need to see that data and how the schools are helping these particular schools in our perspective areas.
Okay, so I'm trying to think of, so we.
And COVID plays a role in that as well.
Sure. So, yeah, we, so we can definitely, I mean, I can certainly give you information about devices in schools and hotspots. But I guess in terms of an academic, we are working and Chief DeBroski may be able to help here too. We are developing student learning plans at each of our schools. That's a way to kind of monitor individual students' performance and that, that give that individualized attention to where students are and what supports they need to, to be on track and to be accelerated. And so we have, you know, data that we're collecting on how many folks are filling out those plans and then are doing professional learning with our schools to really enhance the, the depth of those plans and the degree to which they're driving the tutoring that, that Chief DeBroski talked about, the, the extended learning time and the acceleration work. And do you want to add anything to that, Chief DeBroski?
No, I mean, I would say the strategies that we outline, that personalized piece requires us to be very specific and responsive to individual schools. And if there are individual things surfacing at those schools, again, I think to Allison's point of how we then ensure they have what they need in terms of those devices, that personalized learning, digital access, all of those things help us lift up all of the academic pieces and the extended learning as well. So I think if it's a data request, I, I, I would defer to sort of our data folks if we need to do that. But I think I can just say that the strategies we've put forward are ones that we use for all of our schools. And because we do such thoughtful work around data collection for internal reasons, we're able to see which schools are continuing to struggle and which schools may need extra work or supports, whether it's around tutoring, whether it's around extended learning, or to your point, mental health supports, social emotional supports to bring students to have that re-engagement. Because we know that that mental health and SEL piece has to be in place first before they can start to attend to those academic demands and requirements. So I, I think we're trying to strike that balance.
Those are the kind of things that I, that we need to see. So we are, so the council members are educated on how to, we, we're your partners. That's what I'm trying, we're, 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 we're your partners and we want to help share information as well. We are also the connected piece to the parents, to the families, to the school. We're, we're there to help you, but we need, we're not communicating enough to get that information ahead of time. You understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. And so we'll also make sure that you are getting a kind of our regular communications that we send out, like our Winning Wednesdays, it gives updates on some of the things that are happening. So there are different ways that we communicate. We should make sure that you're on those lists and then, and then, yeah, making sure we're getting out information to you about what's happening in our board meetings and so on. So, no, I appreciate it. Of course, you all have, to your point, an ear to the ground and really know your communities really well. So making sure that you have the information you need to serve your communities is really important.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And we did put that request in too, um, um, Council Vice President. Our next questions are gonna come from Councilwoman Porter from the Tenth District. Councilwoman Porter. Okay. Councilman Glover from the Thirteenth District, you have any questions? Councilman Bullock. You have any questions? Oh, okay. Excuse me, Councilman, I think, and Councilman Glover, we can't hear you. Let's, let's come back to Councilman Glover. Councilman Bullock, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't have any questions, but just some comments. Again, I do appreciate what Vice, Vice President Milton mentioned, and also really do appreciate the school district's presentation. Again, we know we're working with some very challenging times, not only from an academic point of view, but also as far as facilities, as far as testing, school performance. So, Mr. Chair, I'm just happy that we're having this kind of dialogue and ongoing communications. That's all I have for, for right now.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to Councilman Glover. I know he was having some internet problems. I don't know if he can. Okay, all right. So Councilman Torrance from the Seventh District.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
You, you still, it's hard to hear you. Did you have any questions? Because he don't went out again. Councilman Torrance, you have any questions? So.
Yes, sir. I have about six or seven from reviewing the presentation.
We'll let you do the first two, sir, and then maybe if you.
So my first. So I want to first thank city schools for the presentation, but I have concerns and questions related to the work in general. First question, and I'll start off with the easy ones, are have we connected with the mayor's office in terms of connectivity and internet services for our families? We know that you have buildings that are in areas where we do have some blackout areas in terms of connectivity, especially in West Baltimore and South Baltimore. So the question is, how will you be of assistance or have you thought about being of assistance to our efforts to increase connectivity to those families as your schools could possibly be hubs for our mesh networks as well? First question.
So our chief information officer is not here, so I will, and I'm not an information officer person. So I will do my best to answer you. And Tina, you can jump in too if I'm missing something. We do, we are in conversation with the mayor's office. I know that Tommy has been working with Jason Hardbeck and others about various ways to try to partner. And we do have a mesh network, one pilot that we were working on with Digital Harbor Foundation at one of the schools, a couple of schools that we've been trying that approach. Yeah, so we certainly are in conversations and if there's a way that can work, we would be open to it. We have expanded broadband to our schools. As you know, we did a, we did an RFP, I think you know, to, to expand the broadband access to our schools. And, and that, that proposal that responded through the E-Rate program was an open competition and the city applied but was not selected. And I think the city's proposal did include some of the services you're talking about to communities, but it, it, you know, it, we went through a process and it didn't meet the requirements of the, the process, so it was not selected. We are still in conversations about ways to try to, to help, to any way we can be helpful to that. But the, the internet connectivity or the increased broadband that we're providing to schools is, is not through that particular plan that was originally discussed with the city, if that's what you're referring to, Councilman Torrance.
More so, it's just the, the lead-in to the slide made it seem as though that there was no interest in any partnership with the city, just to be clarified from what the perspective was. The next question I have for you guys is related to tutoring. With regards to tutoring, twelve thousand students are participating in it. My question is, are we doing corrective instruction for the students who are not participating in tutoring or extended learning? Because if that is sixteen percent, I don't know the percentage, I can't remember the percentage of students who are in extended learning, but I want to know how are we doing corrective instruction? Because we know that growth is one of the key indicators for how we're doing successfully. Because we know with standardized assessing, our students may not perform well outside of project-based learning.
Can I just get in one second before you go, Joan? I just want to go back to the other question. So if it, what, if you're referring to as the lead-in, I mean, I do think we feel quite strongly that providing internet services to communities is really not the responsibility of a school system. So that we are pretty clear on. If there's ways that we can partner or our infrastructure can be supportive, we're open to that. But in terms of, you know, we met a need during an emergency, but the long-term obligation of providing internet services to communities, in my opinion, pretty strongly cannot fall on school systems. So, but we are helpful, if, you know, happy to be helpful if there's, again, some infrastructure. So, but we are helpful, if, you know, happy to be helpful if there's, again, some infrastructure support we can provide. But just that's what we meant by it is that the long-term cost of doing that cannot fall on the school system.
Yep. So I'm happy to, to jump in about the tutoring piece. So you're absolutely right, Commissioner Torrance, we, Councilman Torrance. We have a limitation right now for how many tutoring partnerships and vendors meet the state's criteria for high dosage and highly effective tutoring. So that can't be our only approach to supporting students, right? So we, when we look back at some of our other systems and structures, we think about small group instruction, where and how we're using that time within our school scheduled day to meet in smaller groups, to tailor exactly what students need in that space. And again, we're using a lot of the language of that acceleration. So knowing where we have our data, so all of our students participate in our beginning of the year assessments. So that when they come into a small group, we have the information to be very targeted and how we're approaching whatever learning gap is there, whatever sort of bridge needs to be brought in. So that's one space. The other spaces are personalized learning, digital platforms. So again, iReady, Amplify, Achieve 3000, those offer some adaptive technology, which again, hone in on exactly where a student is and provide that next level of instruction to bring them along. So I want to highlight those two pieces. And then I will also just celebrate the district's work about bringing in high-quality instructional materials for just good tier-one instruction. So we've done tremendous work in the district with our ELA and with our math programs. We're working right now to bring in high school English curriculum. We're doing some work in some of our science curriculum. Again, to start with that really rich set of materials so that we have what we need. So again, we know that the tutoring organizations are working hard so that we can have more vendors to be brought in, because you're absolutely right. 16% of students is not enough. There is definitely a supply-demand issue here. And we know that we can't rely solely on tutoring as the singular way. There's got to be other things there as well.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Councilman Cohen, before I'm gonna go back to Councilman Glover and see if he's still on. Councilman Glover? Councilman Zecorn, your two questions.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Chief Perkins-Cohen, all the other folks, Chief High Cupboard. Appreciate you all being here. So in the past 50 hours, five children in our city have been shot. And I want to be clear that I'm not placing the blame at your feet. That really isn't what this is about and it's not helpful. But it is to say that we, I believe, are seeing a full-blown mental health crisis in our city and frankly, across our country. Every single school I've visited this year has said that the behaviors, feelings of anxiety, sadness and loneliness are worse than they've ever seen. Teachers and staff are pretty consistently burned out. And so I, I think the sense of urgency for all of us has to be there to do more to support our kids, our educators, our parents, because we are literally losing kids in our streets right now. I'm looking forward to working with you all in partnership on the Healing City Act and on the trauma that our kids and families are facing, as we're doing right now with our library system. But before we get there, I did want to lift up one of the practices that I'm actually really proud of in city schools, but I didn't see highlighted in the presentation, which is restorative practices. This is a set of practices that are evidence-based, that have shown in a Hopkins and University of Maryland study to reduce suspension, to increase positive school climate. It's, it's something that just we should be really proud of. And in this moment where we are seeing conflicts escalate to an absolutely absurd level and kids are getting hurt, I think it's really something that we should all be doubling down on because we've seen it work. And we've been recognized nationally for that work within our schools. So I'm curious, just an update on on, on the work around restorative practices that I know so many of our schools are doing. And, and just also kind of want to know sort of how we're positioning that body of work vis-à-vis the rest of the plan and, you know, just sort of lifting up what good is already happening within our schools.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen. I think you're right. I, I don't remember the exact slide, but I don't think it was listed under the advisory slide. What I would lift up to you and get more detailed around is the idea of every day we want our students to have some type of advisory or restorative practice setting. I think that there are themes that we want to get out to students around relationship bullying, or excuse me, relationship building, anti-bullying, as I mentioned before. And you're right, we could have and should have called it out in that slide because it is through our positive restorative practices endeavors over the last, I don't know, four or five more years for some schools that have kind of led us to one of our key themes of being like, yes, you need advisory just about every day. And on the high school level, if you're not going to have it every day, you have to have it every week. So I think there's a proactive part to that. And I think we have been intentional about the time. And so it might say advisory, but a lot of times they are starting off the day in a circle. They are starting off talking through what is going on in their community or what they're, what they're facing as individual students. So I think your point is well taken. And what I would say is that time that we've committed towards advisory, I think there is really overlap in that. And I think it, part of it has came from our restorative practices and the positive things that we've seen. As you know, there's also a reactive part to restorative practices when something does go down that isn't positive. But we are trying to be as proactive as possible and using that time wisely.
Councilman Cohen, is that a request? Is something I-
Yeah, let me try to frame it, Mr. Chair. I, I think what I'd be interested in, Chief Davis, is an update on where we are in terms of implementing school system-wide restorative practices. And to really see it, you know, featured in this plan. Because I believe from hearing from many of our schools that it's a important piece of, you know, supporting the emotional needs of our kids. Does that make sense? Or was that just a jumble of words?
No, we can go farther with schools and how they're implementing it. And, you know, I think to a greater level than, say, just one part of the plan.
Okay, great. Yeah, would love that as a report to the committee. Appreciate that. Mr. Chair, my second question. So I was encouraged in the plan that you all presented to be, to see the real emphasis on student leadership. And I think there are just a lot of opportunities to lift up the leadership of our young people in Baltimore. They do some extraordinary work. One coming up is, as you know, Chief Davis, the Healing City Summit. One of the days is entirely student-led and student-planned. Last year, we had about 300 kids attend virtually and stay the whole time, which is, you know, remarkable. And would love to see city schools really leaning in and supporting that. But I wanted to actually ask about Senate Bill 157. And, and just some confusion that I feel because I know that we're working really hard as a school system to embrace student leadership. But just hearing some discrepancy around the, the plan and the good work that is happening around supporting students as leaders. But then that we, I believe the school system, the school board have come out and opposed SB 157 to have two student board commissioners that are democratically elected, that would have full voting rights. And, and so I was wondering if you could explain just some of the opposition to that bill? Because to me, it just, it, it feels like a real, real opportunity to embrace student leadership and to really honor how smart our kids are and how capable they are of participating in processes like the school board. Thank you.
So, yeah, so I'm happy to talk about it a little bit. I believe we actually proposed amendments to it, is I believe what we did. We don't believe that there are certain matters that school, that young people should be voting on, like personnel matters, budget matters, school closings. Those are good examples of things where it's just very difficult for adults to make some of those decisions. That we've seen recently, it's difficult for elected officials to make some of those decisions. So it would be very difficult for students to make those decisions. They're really, they're really complicated decisions that, you know, that it, it just requires a lot of engagement of, of the community. It requires a lot of understanding and that we just think that that is something that is a lot to ask for student commissioners. We think student commissioners are an important part and ASCBC work and the student development work that Tina talked about, or Chief High Cupboard talked about, is a really important way to hear the student voice that you're talking about. And so we, we are working really hard to create more opportunities for students to hear their voice and build up that kind of engagement in an effective way to hear from students. We actually just had our cabinet retreat at ACE. And I want to give a shout out to the ACE team and the student-led government that they had there who came to talk to us about concerns that they had. And it was a great exemplar of really enabling students and working with students to be informed advocates for issues that they care about and really coming to us with really well-researched arguments about the things that they cared about. And so I think that's the real work that has to be happening with students, is really providing them the support and the opportunities and, not just the opportunities to advocate, that's important, but also helping support them. And how do you research issues? How do you become informed on issues? How do you effectively advocate on issues? And I think we have some schools who are doing a really good job of that. And I think that's what we're trying to work in the new work we're doing with ASCBC to really help, to help see that more consistently across our schools. Because that feeds into, to your point, Councilman Cohen, the, the, the school board, the student members on the school board that we want to make sure have the ability to vote on. A lot, they vote on a lot of decisions. There are just certain decisions that we think that should not really be the, in the, that the school board member shouldn't, or a student member should not be voting on.
No, I, I appreciate that. And just my understanding is that the, at least from what I've read, the ASCBC, like the students involved have been very, very pro thi- this bill and have been extremely supportive, as have many of the other student groups in the city. So, you know, I would just say that I think, you know, I understand that there are personnel issues that, you know, there's a degree of sensitivity. But I, I just think, just from my own experience as a teacher, as a nonprofit director in this job, I, I really trust our young people to do a great job. And so that's what I got. But thank, thank you, Chief Perkins-Cohen. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everyone for being here.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm, um, we're going with the second round, we're going to do our question. But I want to go back to Councilwoman Porter, see if she, I don't know if she's on here. Okay, Councilman Glover? Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna go back to Councilman Torrance, because he said he had six. But I don't know if we can do six today, Councilman, so.
It's fine, Mr. Chair, it's fine. So what I'll do is I'll have, I'll put it in this request. They can respond now to the initial question. So in terms of tutoring intervention programs, this led to my next, no, no, JJ. Um, okay. The, for my first, my questions that I want to ask in terms of like a response. Say hi.
Hi.
Okay, Jay Jay gave me take over.
And then chocolate pancakes went wrong. I know. Okay, go get your coloring book. My first question, and that way I don't monopolize the meeting, is how are we ensuring tutoring is happening? Then how are we using data to measure the effectiveness of tutoring? And then what is the plan in terms of long-term sustainability of tutoring? And then for my next series of questions are, and I'll just email this to you guys. How are we holding school leaders accountable? And how are we holding district officials accountable for tutoring intervention programs? While I understand that they, some are advisory, some are not. I'm looking at past teaching and learning updates. My question is, how are we ensuring implementation, implementation is done with, with accuracy and fidelity? And then I'll just email. I have a lot more questions from-
Which, which one do you want to ask? And then if you put the others in the chat, I'll make sure Ms. Marguerite can get that over to them so they can answer the question.
Perfect. I'll email them, Ms. Marguerite. My first question is, how are we ensuring tutoring is happening? Because I do know that one vendor is concentric. And then how? And the next question is, how are we using data effectively to measure the effectiveness?
Yeah, I'm happy to, to answer or hold on, because I'm not sure if Councilman Torrance is still with us. Or do you want to just email? We, we can certainly provide those levels of, of answers. Oh, here you are.
Sorry, I'm back. So one, how are we ensuring that it happens? Second, how are we measuring effectiveness? And what is the plan for long-term sustainability?
Yeah, no, no, thank you so much. Great question. So one of the pieces that's been a big priority and lift for us has been centralized coordination for these exact reasons. Attendance matters if students might be scheduled for tutoring, but if they're not showing up for tutoring or there's a disconnect between a tutor not showing up, like, we don't get the impact. So we are monitoring attendance. We are tracking data to see those students who are receiving tutoring. How are they doing? How are they, again, progressing on some of our assessments? So we can certainly provide that. We have a lot more detailed information on our tutoring efforts. And again, we have prioritized centralized roles to work on this initiative, given the magnitude of, of the work here. And I think as the grant requires us to, the monitoring, the checking in on data and progress is part of our grant expectation. So we can certainly provide those additional details to, to Councilman Torrance.
Councilman Torrance, I know you said you were going to email Ms. Marguerite and she'll make sure they get over to you, so you know that. Additional questions?
No, sir, I'll yield. I don't want to monopolize the committee's time and I respect-
No, 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 we're gonna make sure you get your questions answered, though. So you asked, we're gonna make sure additional questions are sent over to the right people and then they respond back to the questions.
That's totally fine. So my next question is, how are we working with, with school leaders for accountability? But also supports? Because one of the things is with intervention programs, we know that sometimes, and we're in a pandemic, so staffing levels may not be there for the intervention programs and supports for the students when they're going through those programs and the platforms. We know it's adaptive, but how are we supporting our school leaders and also holding them accountable for it as well?
I want to be clear, Councilmember Torrance, are you talking specifically about, say, tutoring or the software programs? Or are you talking about in general?
I'm leaning more towards the software programs because I know that like, one of the things I'm happy to see is that you guys have, oh, I would say nearly one, literally almost 90% in one-to-one, which is phenomenal, first and foremost. The question with the platforms is, while we may have standing-up tutoring, we have these interventions that are on platforms. How are we making sure students are using them? How are we making sure that the school leaders are being held accountable for the implementation of those programming? But also how are we supporting them? Because we know that like, if we are to do this right, it has to start from the head of that building down to the teachers and being flexible, given the fact that we are in a climate where there are staff shortages and things happen in buildings.
Yes. A lot of these software programs, we have to work with our partners or vendors or companies, whatever you want to call them, because they will give us information. But for instance, we've just recently had one of our platforms get to the point that we can tell the percentage of students by grade level that are using the software appropriately. We all, we haven't always had that information. And so that allows us to follow up with schools to figure out if there's some barrier as to why a class or a grade level is not there. See if we can use a lot, utilize the personalized learning time. If there are students that are struggling even more, work with them so that they can work after school in our extended learning program. So there's a lot of different options. So there's a lot of different options. Um, and I will just say, Councilmember Torrance, a lot of this information, it doesn't come naturally out of the software programs. It takes a lot of coordination and a lot of effort, um, to get to that point. And so there is an accountability aspect, but there is also a supportive aspect because we have to make this easy for our school leaders and easy for our teachers so that they can adjust, so that they can ensure that the students that need the most help are using the appropriate interventions, the appropriate software, and frankly, the time throughout the day. That happens through a combination of both their supervisor and the school's office team. It also happens with the academic team, um, that is very focused on these specific initiatives or these specific strategies. So it is a combination of both that give the support. And it's usually my team that follows up if we're not seeing the change or the movement appropriately.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Torrance?
Yes, sir.
I just have, I just have a question about, um, building family school partnership slide. I want to hear more about how you're linking family engagement to students' learning and school appro- improvement. And can you vise more specific about goals and objectives on how we measure success for these initiatives?
Good afternoon, I'm happy about that morning still, happy to take that one. Um, so I can't give you the actual goals and objectives in this meeting. If you'd like us to follow up, I'm happy to give that to you. But the way we do our work, and as I said earlier, is that we have family engagement specialists who work with each principal's CLN, provide training weekly to support them when they're in a regular meetings. Then they're also available to go to schools and coach them or support them in act- in family engagement activities. Everything is supposed to be designed to linking families to the academic success of their children. That is the laser-like focus that our family engagement team has. So we have deeper levels of engagement, our FACE Fellowship, where those principals and teams are setting goals for their individual schools about the goal they'd like to see happen, uh, to improve, uh, the family engagement, those activities. They're putting together plans for those schools and goals and training a whole cohort of folks at each of those schools around that. We do measure, uh, family satisfaction through our family surveys, about whether or not they feel like they're engaged with their, um, uh, this, this decision-making and advocacy, whether they're engaged with the child's school or their teacher, if they're getting feedback the right way. That's how we measure success, um, what that looks like. And that, as I said earlier, that data will be posted to our website where you can actually see we had really high ratings from our families about family engagement. And I think we spoke early, um, Chair, about the idea that some of the, the schools where the 20% of those that are not satisfied, that's the deep work that we have to do to figure out why families aren't satisfied at those schools, what we need to improve the satisfaction for those, those families. And we also have data that each school is getting from these surveys where they're getting coached and walked through what family response has been. And then how they can get, how, we can support them in building better and stronger connections with families. Last but not least, what I will add, we didn't make any mention of our community school strategy. Well, we have family engagement on one side. My office also runs community schools where our, we have 130 schools designated as community schools where our, uh, coordinators or, or site specialists are, um, there to support and connect families to resources as well, serving as one of the first points of entry when families having a concern or a need of support or resources or partnership. And that those folks are there to design those strategies to help families also alleviate or ameliate the concerns they might be having in a personal life or at home. And so that, the children can actually better connect to their academic success. So that's the ways in which we're doing that. I'm happy to expand more if you need me to.
No, thank you, I appreciate the explanation. Um, uh, I don't, council. Um, Council Vice President Miltonson, do you have any additional question?
Uh, no additional questions, but want to say that, you know, sitting here, listening to my other colleagues, and, and you know, all of our, I just want to say that all of our questions are really geared around towards that I think the school system needs to do a better job in communicating and also giving families and students and, uh, other, uh, partners out here that work, that are working towards, um, helping individual students achieve academically. And you're not doing a well enough job in that. And it, we need to have, you know, it need, as, uh, Councilman Cohen had mentioned, we're, well, you know, this is a dire time now and you can't do things the same way, structured by, uh, something that instruct, written instructions. Because every community is different in this city. And we have to learn how to operate that way and help our families that way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You are welcome, Vice President Miltonson. Um, I'll go back to Councilman Bullock.
Oh, nothing right now, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cohen, you have one additional question?
No, I'm okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and real quick, before we, uh, go over to, um, any public testimony, I wanted to let my colleagues know, if you have any additional questions, please email them over to Mrs. Curran and we'll make sure we get them to North Avenue and get them answered. Um, Ms. Curran, do we have any public testimony?
Um, no one raised their hand, but I'm going to go to the call-in users right now. Call-in user number one, do you have anything you would like to say? You're unmuted. Hello? Okay, next person. Javon Griffin, would you like to testify?
I know, appreciative of everything that we were able to do for her, thank you.
Okay. And last, okay, thank you. And last is Jasmine Barnes, would you like to testify? Ms. Barnes?
She's one of my staff, Marguerite, thanks.
Okay, well, that concludes public testimony, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Um, I want to thank, um, CEO Santalisa's staff for that, um, presentation or update on the school system. Uh, I think this is very helpful, not just for me, but for the whole coun- council, colleagues, not just the committee members, but just having that current update so we know exactly what's happening. And we don't have to go and see if we see it on a news clip. The update is very important to me, so I want to thank you for that presentation. I want to thank the committee members for their good questions. And this hearing is in recess and everybody have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you.